Westmont Planning and Zoning Commission. Mr. Secretary, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Sharp.
Here.
Commissioner Thomas.
Here.
Commissioner Scales.
Here.
Commissioner Lavoy.
Here.
Commissioner Clemmons.
Here.
Commissioner Van Buren is here, and Chairman Carmichael.
Present.
We have a quorum with Commissioner Sharp on Zoom. I invite everyone to stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And while I have you gentlemen standing, anyone who testifies before the commission is required to be sworn in, so if you'd raise your right hand and swear that any and all testimony you give is fully truthful.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Also a reminder that anyone who testifies must sign in with name and point of contact, either at the podium or in the hallway. A reminder to the rest of us to silence your electronic devices. Next item would be the approval of the minutes of the December 8, 2021 regular meeting. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the December 8 minutes.
Second. Scales. Have a motion and a second. A discussion of the minutes, questions on the minutes. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Thomas.
Here.
Commissioner Scales.
Here.
Commissioner Lavoy.
Yes.
Commissioner Clemmons.
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Sharp.
At.
And Chairman Carmichael.
Yes. Next item is open forum. This is the opportunity for anyone from the community to come to the podium and address any issue that is not on our published agenda for the evening. Seeing no one, we'll proceed to a review of the public hearing procedures. First, we introduce the applicant and his petition, and the applicant presents that petition. Next comes our village staff, who will make comments about that, and then it's the turn of the public, or anyone from the public can make questions and comments to the petitioner. Petitioner, of course, can respond, and throughout the discussion, we have the village attorney with us for further comments. Finally, the commissioners will make their questions and comments, and finally, a vote. And that's our public hearing procedure. I'd like to change the order of our agenda tonight and start with new business, and our continued item from last month will take second. Our new business is PZC 163-2021, a request from Barnes Development Company regarding the property located at 6490 South Cass Avenue in Westmont for the following. A, a special use permit request to operate a battery and tire sales and service establishment in the B2 general business district. Second, a zoning code variance request to allow a parking lot to encroach into the side yard adjoining 65th Street in the B2 general business district. Third, a zoning code variance request to allow a flagpole to exceed the maximum height of buildings and structures in the B2 general business district. Fourth, a preliminary plot of dedication, and finally, a site and landscaping plan approval. And good evening, sir. You'll be representing the Barnes Company?
Correct, yeah. I'm Matthew Schumaker with Cage Civil Engineering. They're a consultant, and Barnes Development could not make it tonight, but they would like to be here if they could have been, so.
Could you make those microphones, maybe bend them in a little bit, then? Thank you.
Yeah, and I'll try to lean in a little bit, but two.
Go ahead. Well, you go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for having us this evening. I definitely appreciate the time. If you're not familiar with Belt Tire, I'll try to give you a brief history of the company as well. So they are operating primarily in Indiana, Michigan, and Ohio right now. They're a family-owned business. They've been in business for about 100 years, and they have close to 140 stores operating at this point. And over the past year, they've slowly been making the push into the Chicagoland market, and they're making a big push right now. They see tremendous opportunity, and they're trying to seize that as well. So they currently have, I believe, four open stores in the Chicago area, one in Naperville, one in Villa Park, and two in Juliette. If you haven't been to one of them or seen any, I highly suggest it. They take a lot of pride in their stores. They, in my opinion, they look great from the outside, and they're very clean, well-run stores as well, so if you have the opportunity, please take the time to check it out. And then I will start here. So our site is located at the northwest corner of Cass Avenue and 65th Street. This was originally one lot. The two parcels were split by 65th Street in the 1990s, which created the north lot and the south lot, and Belt Tire is focused on the north lot at this point. That lot is currently about 1.59 acres, I believe. This is a view looking northwest from the intersection of 65th and Cass into the lot. And then, just, I already touched on a little bit of the history with Belt Tire, but the building itself is, the exterior is brick veneer with small Ephes crown at the top. The mechanical units are screened from view with the parapet, and then obviously, fire suppression is provided, as well as LED lighting, dark sky, downcast fixtures, and those are in accordance with village requirements and photometrics as well. Here's a rendering looking at, I guess this view would be as you're at the stoplight heading north, looking to the northwest would be on the top, and then as you're heading south, the view on the bottom is what you would see on the right-hand side of the street as well, towards the front of the building. The top elevation is the south side of the building, so this is a ten-bay building, so ten bays would be where the cars obviously enter and exit on the south side of the building. The south elevation, or the bottom elevation, is the east side of the building facing Cass Avenue. The top elevation here is the north side of the building, and then the bottom elevation is the west side or the back of the building. There are just a couple man doors and an overhead delivery door, so all deliveries are in the backside of the building away from Cass Avenue. This is a site plan for our proposed development, and you'll see here, access is pushed west away from Cass Avenue. There are two variances we are requesting with this development as well, one being the flagpole. So our flagpole is a 60-foot-tall pole with a 30-foot-by-20-foot flag, and it actually, size-wise, is very proportional to the building, and that's why I suggest if you do have an opportunity to visit one of the Belt Tire sites, so you can actually see how the flag looks. It's not obnoxious or oversized, it fits well with the building. The other variance, I'll let Joe touch on this a little bit further, but it is in regards to the parking setback on the south side, and there, we are actually dedicating a portion of our property to the village for the 65th Street right-of-way. As the sidewalk was constructed, it's actually on private property right now, so we're dedicating that portion of the property back to right-of-way. There is also a dedication on the north side of the site. You can see the darker dashed line that runs through roughly the middle of Pier Drive, that is the existing property line, so Pier Drive is actually within the private property as well. So there is a 26-foot right-of-way dedication on the north side of the property. The truck traffic for deliveries obviously would come in off of Cass Avenue and enter on the west side of the property. It would pull parallel to the back of the building where deliveries would be dropped off. Deliveries are typically twice a week, they last no more than 30 minutes, so they drop the product off, and then they also take the used tires away for proper disposal. So everything is stored inside the building, there is no storage of old tires or whatnot outside of the building. Overall, we feel that the use is well-fitted for this area. Belt Tire and the Barnes Group feel that it's a prime site for this use. We have also submitted to the DuPage County Department of Transportation, and they have noted that there are no major concerns with traffic congestion, and the use fits well with the surrounding area as well in regards to traffic. This is a landscape plan, so you'll see that we have, to the extent possible, screened the parking lots. There is a four-foot-tall board-on-board fence on the west side of the property, as well as on the south side of the property to keep any headlights from shining to the west or the south. Additionally, the parking lot screening is provided with some shrubs and other plantings as well. I think that is it for now, but I would love to answer any questions you may have as well, and I know Joe has a little bit more to add as well.
Okay, thank you. Stan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So what's before you? There are several requests, so I'll try to touch on each one of them. So the first is, the applicant is requesting a special use permit. So this in our code is classified as a battery and tire sales and service establishment that requires a special use in the B2 district. In addition to our standard special use considerations, this use does have two additional conditions. One is that the special use may be permitted where the owner satisfactorily establishes that there will be no appreciable traffic congestion or hazard to pedestrian safety. That's why the applicant mentioned the traffic generation as part of the presentation. They've indicated that deliveries are somewhat limited a couple times a week, and that would be for the larger trucks that come through. The actual, you know, number of cars that come through is somewhat nominal, and they provided additional extra parking up and over and beyond our standards, so their lots can accommodate the business that's coming in. The other is, special use may be permitted provided that there shall be compliance with an approved landscape plan for the screening from view of vehicles awaiting service and customer pickup, and that there shall be enclosed storage of all vehicles awaiting service or customer pickup. So that is kind of a standard that is somewhat universal to, I would say, repair shops. In this case, the users are, they're not long-term, so it's not like a typical repair shop where the car sits there for several days. This is a couple-hour service, so there, it's a standard parking lot. However, we did ask that the parking lot that is adjacent to residential to the west have additional landscape and that little four-foot fence that he indicated. So that was our request, and that was to accommodate the residential. We did not ask for a six-foot fence, because you will note that this is a very unique site. It's got streets on all four sides. I don't know the last time that I've seen any site where it has streets on all four sides. So not only did they improve the building with the brick on all four sides, we asked for four-sided architecture, which they accommodated, but they had additional constraints such as, we really don't have a backyard, you know, like everyone else is entitled to, so they've really beefed up the landscape and the screening where the cars would sit at the back, at the rear, and they've also indicated that it is very rare that they have a car that sits outside overnight, that their business model does not keep cars overnight. It is, it's very similar to Discount Tire on the north side, or I'm sorry, on the east side of the road, not to say they're the same businesses, but if you've ever gone by Discount Tire on a Sunday when they're closed, there's not a car in the lot, and they've indicated if they do need to keep a car, it would be stored inside in the bay, so it's not anticipated that there will be any cars on the lot when they're closed. There are two variances. So the first is the flagpole variance, which he already covered. So we, our code is somewhat silent on the height of flagpoles, and we're discussing this a little bit more with our telecom text amendment later, but basically, our flagpoles basically say that they can be in the front side and rear yard, and they don't have a height standard. In discussions with our attorney, the height standard for the zoning district is applicable here. So in this case, in the B2, 45 feet is the tallest a building could be, so we say that is the tallest a flagpole can be. So the applicant has indicated this is part of their business brand, and they feel it's essential to what they need to operate there, so that is the first variance they're asking for. The second is requested because of a setback on 65th Street for the parking. So I have a visual for you. Dennis, thank you, Dennis. Okay, so the first thing I want to bring your attention to on that site, so first of all, this is a rare site, it's a vacant site in Westmont. We don't have many vacant sites. This, as far as I could tell, used to be one larger property that had a house on it for many years. In the 90s, the village worked with the property owner to construct 65th Street, to connect 65th to the residential to the west and Cass Avenue to the east. When that was constructed, I don't think our surveys were nearly as good as they are now, and the arrow to the south, the little yellow arrow, if you can see the dotted green line, that's the property line, and you will see that that village-owned sidewalk is on private property. We have asked the applicant to donate that back to us, and because of that shift in the property line, it kind of offset their site plan proposal. This is a narrow site as you get closer to Cass, and it was, it was very difficult to get parking, the building, and the drive around it all to fit in. So when you look at their site plan, there is a parking spot that encroaches to that new property line. However, it's just the point of, it's kind of a skewed parking lot, so it's not the entire parking lot is at a zero lot line setback, it's basically just the corner of the parking lot. So that is the variance that is requested, and that is because of village request. While I have this diagram up, you'll see the arrow on the north side, and you'll notice that the property line does go through Pier Drive. What happened in the 90s, as a concession to getting the right-of-way to split this lot for 65th, the village donated the right-of-way on that north side of Pier, basically, so that if and when this property developed, the property owner hadn't given away all his property, he had a little property to the north. And the thought was that when these property, this property developed, they would reconfigure Pier, narrow it, build a new curb. In this case, the applicant indicated, we don't need that, we don't need the land. Yes, if they kept it, they may not need the variance, however, the village is very happy to keep that width of Pier. That is our preference. So basically, those two things combined is what kind of drives the need for the variance, and that is what drives that plot of dedication, which is their, one of their other requests. So usually, we see plots of subdivision here, or plots of consolidation. It's very rare when we see the plot of dedication unless it's combined with a larger project. In this case, the plot of dedication is at village request, and the applicant has been very gracious to work with us to get what we've preferred on this case. So those are the two variances, the special use. As I had discussed, there's the plot of dedication, which basically is the dedication of both the north and the south back to the village, and then the site and landscaping approval. The applicant has met most of the requirements for landscaping. If you go through the staff report, there are a couple outstanding landscape comments, and so if you do approve tonight, I would approve conditionally, that they get a revision to village staff before it goes to the board. I will tell you, they do have that document, they just got it to me very late tonight. I haven't had a chance to review it and make sure it met all the conditions, but they have already provided the document. I just didn't want to rush a review and then put it before you, so I will review it before it goes to the board to make sure it met those limited conditions that were left on the landscape review. As to engineering review, because this did involve public streets, we did involve both public works consultant and our own consultant. They do have a few comments, but they both indicated to me that those comments really can be remedied through permit. There's nothing that would change the site plan based on this, and that it could move forward with those comments still remaining. As I indicated, they actually exceed our parking requirement for this type of use, so the, we don't ask people to give extra parking, we let them base it on their business model. So they've actually done some extra landscaping, they did the four-sided architecture, which made us very happy. Sinage is represented in the plans that you have. Although signage is not being reviewed here, we always ask the applicant to show us the signage, because we want to see if it meets our codes. And if it doesn't meet our codes, we say either amend it and fix it, or ask for a variance while you're here with us. Their initial plan did exceed our code, what they're showing on the building now does meet our code. It does seem like a lot of signage, because they have signs on three sides of the building, but technically, per the sign code, because they have four streets, they could have four signs on the building. They've, basically, I asked them, I said, there is no point to having a sign that faces the residential area, and they were happy to remove that. And as always, I didn't touch on everything. If you have questions, I'm here to answer them.
Thank you, Joe. Good recap. Now, anyone from the village, from the public?
I have two questions.
Certainly. Would you come to the podium and introduce yourself?
So my name is Rudy Angelucci, and I live at the Peers Condominiums, right west of the development. It's a coincidence that I am retired civil engineer. I have done what you are doing many times. So the question that I have is, I was looking at the plan, I would like to know what are the egress and ingress areas. It seems like it's not coming from Cass Avenue, it would be through Pier and 65th. So I'm curious about that, it's really my only concern, and then, I understood correctly, with all, being nice and accommodating and everything, there is going to be no reconfiguration of either Pier Drive or 65th Street. So this is the only question I have. Now, off the record, if the gentleman could give me just a data copy that what you posted, not the landscape, but the site and development, because I am on the board of directors of the Peers. We are 190 residents there, so I was asked to come just to better understand, so those are the only questions I have, really.
Excellent. Thank you. Mr. Schumaker, would you comment, please?
Yeah, absolutely. So that is correct. Ingress egress would be from Pier and 65th, and towards the west end of the site, towards Willow. Just the way the building is situated, it would be difficult, for multiple reasons, to have access closer to Cass. One, DuPage County DOT, it's limited access, so we would not be able to have access directly from Cass with Pier and 65th that close together. Additionally, there are some grade change issues across the site, so the site drops probably about six feet from Cass Avenue to Willow. So the way the site sits and access into the site, it works from a grade perspective to have access on the west end, on the lower end, which will allow trucks, cars, obviously, to enter the site without issues, and access from Pier or 65th closer to Cass would create issues as traffic heads east towards Cass. If it backs up, it would therefore block the entrances, so that's why the ingress egress is set up the way it is. And I'm sorry, I forgot the second item. Landscape plan?
I provided my copy to the gentleman.
Okay, perfect, perfect.
And then I think the last commentary, I mean, there are no changes to the configuration that the Peers receive.
That is correct, yeah. With, because of the dedication, we therefore do not have any modifications to either right-of-way or roadway.
Well, I'd like to correct, there are a few, not to the street, but, so there are sidewalks that will be built on Pier and on Willow Way, and then there will be street trees built around the entire property, so it will be greatly improved from the condition that it is there, at least for accessibility, so you don't only have to walk along 65th there, you'll have one, a sidewalk along Pier as well.
Correct.
And Pier will not be narrowed. It will not be narrowed.
Correct. No modifications to the vehicular way.
If the applicant had approached us and said, well, no, your street is on my property, then I think that we'd see a different, basically, they have the right to remove our road from their property and narrow Pier. That's why I said that's, it's our preference that we'd rather keep that wider street there. And the same condition exists on that lot to the south, that's not a part of this, but was the other vacant lot. When you look at the aerials based on the lot line, you'll see that the lot line runs right through Willow on the street on the south side as well, so.
All right. Thank you. Let's move on to the commissioners. Commissioner Sharp on Zoom, would you like to begin?
I didn't have a lot of questions on this proposal. I'm excited to see that infill is happening, and the building looks very handsome, and it's going to be a great addition to Cass Avenue in this spot. I just wanted to get some information from you, Mr. Schumaker, on the retaining wall that's on the south side of the property, or the north side of 65th Street. What's the height differential there?
I don't have the exact numbers, but I believe it's at the tallest point roughly four feet.
Okay, so it will have a railing on the top of it?
It will, yes.
And then, this is a question to staff. I saw the photometric plan included for the site, and usually, we talk about zero-foot handles at the lot line, and I saw that that was not the case on the strict plan, is that an issue?
They submitted that, and I saw that as well. I want to say there's even some point-twos or point-threes that go into the street. I'm not going to say that I'm not going to make them reduce that to zero at the lot line, but because it's going into those kind of underlit streets, staff doesn't see that as a true issue, however, we will closely examine that when it goes through the permitting stage.
Another question for the applicant, is this building conditioned for staff? Air-conditioned?
Yes, yes, it is.
Okay, so would you expect that these doors remain closed or open for service?
They only open them for the vehicles to come in and out, otherwise, they remain closed.
And then the last comment I have is about the flagpole. We just looked at the flagpole ordinance, I feel like, last month or the month before, right?
Tom, it was part of our discussion on telecom. We will continue that discussion after this, and what it is, is the code is a little vague. It doesn't give a maximum height for flagpoles, so we default to what the zoning district permits for the building. In this case, it's 45. Now, when we get to that telecom discussion, what staff is proposing- what staff is proposing is basically inserting that language to flagpoles. That basically, they abide by the zoning district height. So in this case, we would say it would be 45 feet, but with an exception of no taller than 60 feet. And that's because we do have a couple zoning districts that have a height of 60 feet or maybe even taller. And so we felt that, that nothing should go over 60 feet. So yes, we did discuss it. We haven't remedied it yet. But this variance request would be needed independent of how that text amendment is processed.
Okay. I'm interested to hear what the other commissioners think of the flagpole. I, I haven't think it's an issue myself, although I don't also think it's needed, being that it's on, it's on Cass Avenue with clear sidelines. I don't think it's a super tall flagpole, in my opinion, but I'm not staunchly against it, so I'd hear what you guys think. And that's all my comments.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Scales?
Sure. Thanks for the presentation. Appreciate it. I just had a couple of quick questions. I guess this is just for my own interest. Does the underground detention, does that fill up and then release to the storm at the north of the site? Or does it, where does it release into?
It releases, yes, to the northwest, into the existing storm sewer at that location. The site naturally drains that way right now.
Okay. So it fills up and then, once it hits a certain capacity, it slowly releases into the?
Correct, yeah. Based on the, the county and local ordinance, there's a certain release rate that we have to hit. So it fills up and releases at that allowable release rate.
Okay. And in terms of the, the flagpole, is it always an American flag that's waving from the?
Yeah. One, large American flag. I believe the closest bell tire is probably in Naperville off of Ogden Avenue. It's a very similar location, right off a main four, four-lane highway. I drive past it every day on my way to work. And it, quite honestly, I, I think it looks great, but, you know.
I agree. All right, good. Those are my questions. I appreciate it. Thank you. The package was very well put together, too. Thanks for the comprehensive information.
Thank you.
Can I go ahead and note real quick? Our sign code would not allow them to fly any, any flag that is advertising. So the American flag would be classified as one of the flags that's exempt. So actually, the size of the flag is exempt. It's the pole height that is not exempt.
But the, and the type of flag is, is restricted. It can only be the American flag.
Well, it just can't be, it can't be advertising or a sign. So we don't necessarily say it has to be an American flag, but we, it can't be advertising.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Lavoy?
Well, I too will compliment you on the package. It's very comprehensive. It's more than normal than what we normally see here. And, you know, I, I, I've looked at the plan. As far as what's in front of us, I don't really have any, any problem. I just have a couple of comments. I want to make sure that the flag is lit, by the way, because at night, if you have a flag on the pole, it should be eliminated. So if you don't have power on there, I'd like to see that. And I don't have any problem with the variations, the height of the flagpole. I don't have any, any problems with this, this package at all. The only comment from a, and you know more than, than I know, and as far as circulation and comments from the public, I think it's, it's done properly. I think it's done to the best that it can be, based on the conditions that we have. You've pulled access off of, off of Cass Avenue, which allows traffic to flow through the site and not create a stacking issue on Cass Avenue. And also, the lane on 65th Street, there is a turn lane, a northbound left turn lane. So traffic will, will function pretty well here. And the access points, I think, are as best they could be. And I think that the, the points of ingress on Pier Drive are going to take offload that traffic of, of people coming to the, the, the bell tire facility on an ingress standpoint. But egress, the signalized intersection will handle it. And I don't believe it will impact the neighboring properties at all. Nice package. The only thing that I would say that's outside of our purview would, my only comment would be, is that the garage door is faced to the south, and that is where your public parking is. So there's going to be a lot of traffic motions coming out, moving cars in and out all the time out of the garage. And maybe those garage doors could be on the north side. So people that are actually coming to the facilities aren't in conflict with people that are operating the facility in and out all the time. I see that, that signalized intersection being the, especially people coming from the south to you to utilize the, the entrance, the ingress on the south side, which would go right past your service doors. So anyway, that's my only comment, but it's not part of our purview. Good package. I'm in favor of the plan.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Clemmons?
Yeah, I would agree that this is, the presentation was very well done. I do think it's an asset. The questions I had was, actually was about sidewalks because I was concerned because of the piers and the school. But that has been met for that, and then also about the flagpole. So I think it's well done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Thomas?
I liked the presentation. I, I liked how things were worked out as far as the property lines go. Give, take, everybody walks away satisfied. I said 60, 60 feet high, you know, and that's been addressed also. I would have liked to have driven past some of the other facilities and, and been convinced that it's, it fits, you know. And you have said that staff is in agreement with it. And it's a, it's a very nice presentation. You guys did an excellent job, and I'm in support of it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Van Buren?
I like the way you work together with the village staff in cooperating with the suggestions. And it seems like you, any problem that we would be considering here tonight, you've pretty well worked out. This is a, obviously, a successful business. You've operated several more, and, and you've been in business a long time. So we're happy to have a business like that join us in Westmont, and we wish you luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. For my part, I have a few comments and questions. Okay, the signage issue, the signs all meet codes, that's?
They meet code. And I will reevaluate their sign package when it comes in for permit to still make sure they haven't changed it or enlarged it or still meet it.
Sure. It seems to be a good fit for this kind of odd-shaped parcel. Regarding the flag, yes, the American flag has to have a dedicated light if it's flown after sunset and before sunrise. I assume your company's been flying these flags for many years. You say you're coming up on 140 different locations. The company, the bell tire, has always flown a, a large flag?
Correct, yeah. There have been a few situations where it has not been allowed, which is very rare. But in, in most situations, it is the 60-foot flagpole and the 30-by-20 flag, and it is lit at night.
Okay. And the deliveries on the west side of the building, are those deliveries during operating hours?
Correct.
Okay.
And just, I don't know if I mentioned this in the initial presentation, but the hours are Tuesday, Wednesday, Friday, 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Monday, Thursday, 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Saturday, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and closed on Sundays.
Okay. Just that little air station at the southeast corner of the building, is that manned? Or is it just for anyone to come up and?
Correct, yeah. Any, anyone can come up and use it.
24 hours a day? Anyone can drive there?
Correct. Yeah, I believe it's 24 hours a day. I don't know if there's an automatic shut-off after hours. I would have to check on that.
Okay. And just one last thing. I'm curious. I know that your competition across, across Cass Avenue has a service where they will store tires and wheels over the winter and over the summer for those cars that, that have winter and summer tires. Does Bell Tire do that?
No, no. All storage is internal to the store.
But you don't store long-term storage for customers?
They're, they do have product. As far as the seasonal changing out, I'll be honest, I couldn't answer that question.
All right. Okay, before I ask for a, a vote, is there any other, are there any other comments? Questions from commissioners? Village attorney?
No.
Then the chair would entertain a motion to recommend to the village board of trustees, request from Barnes Development. Excuse me.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the special use with the condition that village staff, if they have any other, other changes, modifications that they need to make as the request from Joe, that that would be included.
Excellent. Do I have a second?
Second. Scales?
We have motion and second for a special use permit to operate a battery and tire sales and service establishment in the B2 general business district. Roll call, please. Commissioner Scales?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
And Chairman Carmichael?
Yes. Second, zoning code variance request to allow a parking lot to encroach into the side yard adjoining 65th Street in the B2 general business district. Motion?
Oh, again, make that motion with the same condition as I don't know if the village comments are appropriate for the special use or for the variance. So the condition would apply. A motion to approve.
Okay.
Second, Clemmons?
And second.
Discussion, seeing none. Roll call, please. Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Clemmons?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
And, could I have Commissioner Scales?
Yes.
And Chairman Carmichael?
Yes. Third, do I have a motion to approve zoning code variance request to allow a flagpole to exceed the maximum height of buildings and structures in the B2 general business district?
Vote to approve, Thomas?
Second. Scales?
We have motion and second. Discussion on the motion, seeing none. Roll call, please. Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Clemmons?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Scales?
Yes.
And Chairman Carmichael?
Yes. And D, do I have a motion to approve Plymouth area plant of dedication?
Motion approved. Clemmons?
Second, Thomas. Motion and second. Discussion of the motion, seeing none. Roll call, please. Commissioner Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Scales?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
And Chairman Carmichael?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, may I interrupt?
Yes, please.
This, the site and landscape is the one where staff would recommend a condition that the landscape plan be updated before it go to the village board.
And, and that's, that's noted. Thank you. That is now part of the record. And finally, E, do I have a motion to approve the site and landscaping plan?
Van Buren, yes, and I would add the portion that he suggested.
Okay, thank you.
Second. Scales?
It's a motion and second. Discussion on the landscaping plan, site plan, seeing none. Roll call, please. Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Scales?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Clemmons?
Yes.
And Chairman Carmichael?
Yes.
Okay, sir, there you have it. Staff will notify you when you'll be scheduled to appear before the village board of trustees. And they, of course, have the final say-so. We're a recommending body only. But welcome to Westmont, and thank you, thank you for your presentation.
Yeah, thank you for your time this evening. I appreciate it.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Is that your jacket, sir, or is that?
It's mine.
Sir?
Sir?
It's mine.
Okay.
You're okay.
Need to get John of LA.
Next item is PCC 162-2021, a continuation from our December 28 meeting. A request from the village of Westmont regarding the following. Text amendments to multiple sections of the zoning ordinance to define and regulate wireless telecommunications facilities, including antennas and towers, and to amend current requirements for other types of antennas. Mr. Hinterfein, you're on.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this was continued from our last meeting. And if you remember, we had, we had hashed out a lot of the details. However, Attorney Zemanak had indicated that there were several refinements needed, basically, to clean up some of the language. So a lot of those little details have been amended. None were really substantial, but I do want to highlight a few of them. First is that flagpole discussion that we had with the last one. So if you remember, we had this kind of a piece of code that addressed poles, and we were striking out language about the towers or the, the other antennas. And we had the question of, well, what kind of poles remain in, in that could be constructed? We've elected to strike out that section because we don't feel it's necessary anymore. And what we have done is in the flagpole section, we've actually created language that basically says that flagpoles are restricted to the height of the zoning district. So if, if it were in a residential district, it would be restricted to 35 feet, which is a residential district height. But there are some districts that exceed 60 foot. So we said 60 foot probably is, is the tallest that should be allowed. So we, we basically said, match the height of the district, but by no means ever exceed 60 feet. So that was one of the, the pieces of language that we cleaned up. I know that Attorney Zemanak added some language. We have a setback requirement for these towers equal to the height. So if it was 150 feet away from the, the, it was, if it's 150 feet tall, it needs to be 150 feet away from the property lines. We have added that it should also be 150 feet away from any structures. So if they're building it on a site that has a building, the building should be protected just like the right-of-way or anywhere else it could, could fall.
Would that not affect this bell tower, a 60-foot flagpole? It would have to be at least 60 feet from the building?
This would be for, this would be for a cellular tower only. This is, so that, that fall language. Basically, we have to first say you're classified as a cell tower, and then we have those requirements. This flagpole would not fall under that. And I believe those were the only substantial changes to this. As always, we're available for questions.
I have a question, just because I'm ignorant and don't know. Is there not a small accessory structure that would sit next to a cellphone tower site?
There is.
That count as a structure that would need to be 150 feet away from in that example?
Typically, there's an equipment shed located at the base, sometimes several equipment sheds, which would be considered an accessory structure. And your question is?
Well, if I do understood you correctly, then that structure would need to be 150 feet away from the, the tower in the example you gave me?
I don't believe that was the intent. I think the intent is that it's 150 feet away from any primary structure on the, and I, I don't know the language exactly, but I think the intent is that we're not trying to make those accessory sheds that are needed to serve the pole away from it. It's just to protect the primary use, if there is a primary use of a different building that's on the site.
But that's a great point, and we can easily clean that up in the language. So I can, I can make that, that edit. Commissioner Lavoy, go.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I, of course, would dish with a package like this. I had to do my investigation. So one of the things I found out during that investigation is that I looked at it from the perspective of, well, what's going on with cell towers? And why are we doing this? Because all of our cellphones work fine, and why do we need this? But in, in doing that, what I found is that you hear all the time advertisements related to 5G instead of 4G. And the And the one criteria that I found very interesting is that, that the spacing requirements for towers is pretty wide on a 4G-type program, a platform. 5G, it's very small, like 1,500 feet small. So it's a big difference. So when you, when you look at, you know, I think we're very prudent in doing the ordinance just from that perspective because of the new technology and 5G requirements that are already on the horizon, that, you know, I see that, that because the separation requirement is much less, that we're going to see activity here. And with that, I got to thinking about, okay, this is all great, but what happens when, and would this requirement and this amendment cover modifications that may not be conforming to current code? Let's say that you have a permit that comes in and they want to convert a tower from 4G to 5G. And they come in for permits to do that. And that particular tower, the way our code is written, isn't conforming. What happens then?
My understanding, and Joe, correct me if you're wrong, but the tower is a legal nonconforming structure and is allowed to remain. And they, we do have regulations about just the antennas themselves. So they'd have to comply with all the regulations for the new antennas. And that would include things like a structural report that the tower is safe and sufficient to hold the new antennas. They can't extend out more than 12, 12 feet laterally, all the regulations we have. But the structure itself, I, I guess we get into a question whether if they were to add more antennas than what exists, would that be considered an expansion? I'd say probably not.
So it's a little easy for, to answer, at least, we only have one tower.
Right.
And it was annexed. It was not built with our codes or standards. So we treat the whole thing, including the number of antennas on it, as legal nonconforming because we never established what could be built there or how many antennas could be on it.
Yeah, I'm just asking your opinions and John's opinion about should we add text in here so we don't get variations coming in that I want to add this and this current tower is nonconforming? Do we have to add specific language that affect in this text amendment? And that's really what I'm, I don't want to have these variations come in because it's not exactly in this code, but it's in our other codes that represent that it would be legal, nonconforming. But do we put some sort of language in here to cover that?
Well, John can probably correct me. I think the best, and it's hard to answer that because a lot of the antennas that we have are on buildings or on water towers. And we have some older buildings where we dictated the number of antennas that could be on there. So the Hilton is a good example. We basically said that you have to dictate the number of antennas. And if you want more, then you have to come and get a variance. And we saw variances on the Hilton quite often for many years. I would say that, that the actual number of antennas on all the structures has been diminishing over the years because they've been getting more efficient and they don't need as many of them.
Right.
I think the way the code is written, it basically says that any structure or any tower or building that got a special use approval in the past, it doesn't modify the special use approval, but it doesn't require a new special use if they want to start adding extra antennas. So I don't know that we'll see variances coming in for the number of antennas. We've just created code that says that be painted to match, they can only be a certain height, they can only extend out certain distances from the building itself. And I will, I will be the first to tell you that our, our codes regulating that have never been very good. And if you've ever seen, there's a building on Pasquenelli that has bright blue, it's got a bright blue roof and a lot of equipment. They met our condition to paint it all blue, but it's still ugly blue equipment that you see. So I don't know that the code specifically addresses it. I don't think I have the same fears that we're going to get this rush of variances. I think what it is, is if we see variances, it's going to be because the, the telecom companies can't find a site that meets those setbacks.
Right, right.
And there, I want them to come in for a variance because I think we should be very critical because there probably are very few sites in town
That beats a deterrent.
that can accommodate a 150-foot pole.
Yeah.
So will we see variances when they need to come in? Yes, but I think it's absolutely appropriate that they come before us.
A new wave golf courses could bring in some more revenue. Was Commissioner Van Buren's suggestion.
So I don't know if I answered that very well, and I apologize, but that's the best answer I have.
And I'll add to that. I think it's a great question. And then just quickly looking, looking through the regulations, when it discusses the zoning requirements for tower-mounted cell antennas, which is what we're talking about here, where they want to go on an existing tower, it said that those antennas are permitted accessory use on cell towers that have received a special use permit as required by this section. And your question is, well, what if they haven't received a special use permit? Are they allowed? And maybe we should clarify that. I think the idea is that cell tower, cell antennas themselves aren't as objectionable as the towers. And if there's an existing tower, why not say it's permitted on either an existing tower or a new tower?
Right, we should add that little language in this text amendment. And if we did that, we're covered.
And so let me, let me see if I understand what you're saying, John. It's not that we'd ask that existing tower to come in for a special use. It's that we're grandfathering it in, is that?
Yeah, I mean, they're grandfathered anyhow. And I think we can make the argument that just adding, swapping out antennas, that the antennas are permitted use and are fine as long as they meet the requirements. You know, the right color, structural integrity, there's a licensed wireless carrier, et cetera.
Right.
But I think we can clarify this one section just to say that they're permitted use on basically new or existing cell towers.
And that's the key, the existing towers, so we don't get all these variations.
Yeah, it's a technology we all rely on, so I'd be obstructionist and make people jump through hoops if the structure's already there and is safe.
Well, I, I think that we want to encourage the existing structure to carry as many antennas as they can because then we won't get the request for additional towers.
It's a good point. We do encourage co-location whenever.
Well, that is, how this all began is we had been informed that the tower was being decommissioned and that some of the carriers were scrambling to look for towers in the area 63rd and Cass. And that's when we kind of said, wow, we don't have any code because we've never had a tower. And although I don't think we can confirm that that tower is actually being decommissioned, but as long as it's there, I'd encourage people to use that tower because it's easier to use what's there than to try to build new, so.
Commissioner Sharp, what say you?
I don't have any new comments on this draft from the last one. The comments that I had last month were picked up.
Commissioner Clemmons?
Sorry, I have no, I have no further comment.
Thank you.
No, I don't have a comment. I didn't know with towers this technical. So thank you for clarifying that part.
Yeah, well, I'm glad we're not right next to hair. This issue of 5G and aircraft equipment is an ongoing dispute. Commissioner Thomas?
No, I, I, no, I appreciate the homework that was done. I didn't think of anything in that area.
That's why we're a team.
Mr. Van Buren?
No, I don't have any comment.
Yeah, I would just really, come in, John, the work you've done on this. There's a tremendous amount of organization and reorganization and detail involved in quite a project.
I drafted these regulations more or less for another community, but Bruce did most of the work to adopt it for Westmont and add to it and enhance it. So the credit goes to him, and I just made cleanups to his work.
Okay. That's reference to Bruce Sylvester, our director of community development. With all said, if there's no further discussion, the chair would entertain a motion to approve recommendation of the village board of trustees, text amendments to the multiple sections of the zoning ordinance to define and regulate wireless telecommunications facilities, including towers and antennas, and amend current requirements for other types of antennas.
Motion approved, Clemmons?
Second, Thomas?
I have a motion to approve and a second. Discussion, questions on the amendment, seeing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Scales?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Clemmons?
Yes.
And Chairman Carmichael?
Yes.
Okay, it's unanimous. We can hopefully put that one to bed for a while. Next item, under miscellaneous, is the, first, the Soul Smart zoning review and text amendment discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Herr Hennefind, go.
Okay, so what we have before us is, if you're not familiar with Soul Smart, basically, they're an advocate in the industry for solar panels. So they work with a lot of local municipalities to analyze their existing zoning code, basically to remove any impediments to getting solar panels through the permitting process, through the zoning process, so that it's as easy as possible for homeowners to get solar panels placed on their homes when they want to have them. There are, it's fairly similar to like LEED certification or basically it's a scoring system. So basically, they work with the community and say, well, if you adopt certain things, we can get you a bronze level accreditation. If you adopt more, you get a silver accreditation. If you adopt everything, you get a gold accreditation. And then you basically join other communities with these accreditations and you're marked as a solar-friendly community is the best way I could state it. What the village is looking to do is get a bronze level. And a bronze level doesn't require us to actually do text amendments. But as part of the service they provide is they dissect our code and they say, well, you could change this and you could amend that and you could change this table. And obviously, they're doing that with a, an eye that they want to remove as much restriction as possible. Obviously, what we do is we do it with an eye of what is appropriate for our community. So what we are not doing tonight is we're not talking about any text amendments. What it is, is they provided a document to us saying, we've looked at your code and these are the things that we recognize. And I'll briefly go over them in a second. But basically, our requirement here is to present, have a discussion, and then there's no vote that's needed. Basically, that then sets us towards our goal of getting that bronze level certification. There are other things like having a website with a webpage that, that discusses this information. Staff had to go through essential training. Our building commissioner had to dissect his code to show what was working well, what wasn't. If we were trying to get to a higher level, it would require zoning text amendments. It would require timelines on how quickly we turn around permits. And the village at this point was, was not interested in pursuing that level. So what they've done is they've gone through our code and they've, they've addressed about seven or eight or 10 different issues. And so we just kind of have, have given a brief discussion. So they went through our definitions and they said, well, you should probably adopt better definitions for solar energy systems. And staff agrees with that. They looked through our accessory use table, which is basically where we regulate most accessory uses on a home, and said you should clarify rules for when solar energy systems might qualify as permitted accessory uses. And village staff agrees that that would be a good text amendment as well. They discuss height and they basically state that we should let them go higher than our existing height limitations. Staff doesn't fully agree, but they agree and they say that we might want to still impose height limits on solar energy systems. We don't think it should just be as tall as they, they are proposed. And then we might have some screening requirements that we might want. They said you should have a purpose and intent and add language in the code that basically states what your purpose for solar energy systems are. And so that's basically language that says that solar systems are considered good and green and, you know, promote them within the village. We feel that it may not be necessary, but we'd evaluate the recommendation. They discuss setbacks and to some degree, they'd like us to remove any setbacks for solar energy systems. We think it should be evaluated, but we may want to impose setbacks on solar energy systems. They discuss lot coverage and impervious surfaces. They prefer if you had a solar panel in your backyard on a pole, that it not be counted against impervious surface. We don't quite agree with that. We are very sensitive to lot coverage. And we, we think that it would require some active discussion before we could consider that. And then they had historic district provisions, but obviously, we don't have any historic overlays in the village. So those are the things that they've highlighted in our code. And the way that staff is approaching this is that basically, we'll take this recommendation, we'll put it in our back pocket, and when we are addressing sections of code where they say this stuff can be interjected, we'd address it at that time. It's not staff's intent to come forward with a text amendment to modify several sections of the code for the solar systems. So we don't have to discuss what they gave us unless we want to because at this point, we are not considering a text amendment. We're just presenting what their findings were to the village.
Well, I noticed on that one, on that lot coverage and the, the impervious surfaces, that's really mixing zoning with, with stormwater management, which are unrelated, so that.
We, we just successfully separated that in our zoning code with some text amendments that Nalini did before she was gone.
Say that again.
We successfully kind of separated out stormwater management from lot coverage, from basically engineering and zoning, to clarify some of that language. And their, this recommendation is basically combining it back together again. So that's why we said we'd, we'd need to look at this and discuss this. What it is, is we'd rather be doing this on our timetable, not on anyone else's timetable. And I will.
I'm sorry, just for residential?
They made recommendations just on residential at this point because they felt that recommendations, actually, you know what? I might be wrong. I think this can apply to commercial as well. What it doesn't apply to is standalone facilities, so basically your solar farms.
Yeah, okay.
It does apply to, to commercial as well. It's just, they felt that unless a community was ready to dive into the deep end, addressing code for solar farms is much more involved. So when they assessed ours and gave us our recommendations, they knew we were not looking to get that deep into it. And I will just note that the building commissioner, I've worked with Jason for many years. I've worked in Darian, who's also Soul Smart certified. There are not many differences from our permitting processes now based to what they recommend. We, we process these types of permits very quickly. And we've always, our code maybe is not the clearest on them, but it's, it's, we've been working within the code and interpretations. So it's always been fairly simple to get solar systems meeting certain requirements. So it's not difficult to get a solar panel permit in Westmont.
Do any commissioners have? Do any commissioners have, yes, Commissioner Lavoy, go ahead.
The only thing I have a little problem with their assessment is the setback. And the reason I say that is because if we have a side yard setback, typically those side yards also have easements associated with them for utility companies to come in and do either cable TV or whatever it is. The village might have to come in to do a sewer, we may have a sewer in this, within the setback. So if now we have a solar panel over top of that setback, now we have a conflict. So I would just suggest that we, I don't, I don't mind encroaching a front yard setback, you know, because there's, there's a lot of footage there, but maybe exclude any kind of existing easement encroachment might be the way to go because we have setbacks that have easements in them all over the village. So I just wouldn't want to see someone make the investment in a solar panel for a residence, and then we have to come in, and we have the right to come in because the easement, not the setback, would be in conflict. So I would say that, you know, we can modify that to, not to encroach any utility easements, but setbacks could be what easements could be.
And if and when, and I don't think staff was amenable to the setback recommendations that they had made.
Yeah.
Obviously, they're trying to remove as many restrictions to solar panels as they can without an eye for keeping it out of an easement, or is it encroaching on a neighbor? Is the reflection going to, you know, get into the neighbor's eyes?
That's, there's all kinds of other issues.
And, and actually, I think if you read it, it basically said your lands, like you should remove all landscape because it blocks the solar panels, and we're like, we don't want to give up our landscape requirements.
Yeah.
If and when we do tackle this, staff will do its normal process. This is what I do with any text amendment. Although the recent kind of rushed text amendments, I didn't have to go look at the neighboring and comparable communities. But if you remember the sign ordinance, I know we have some new folks here, I always look at the 10 closest comparable communities to Westmont, including the ones that surround us, and say, what are they doing? Are they requiring setbacks? I come up with an analysis. I say, here's what it seems like the standard is. Do we want to meet the standard, be more stringent or less stringent? So if and when we do come forward with that, I'll come prepared with analysis, and we will fully hash out what we think is right and wrong at that time.
Good job.
Operating, operating standards now is we don't let any accessory structures in three feet of a side yard, five feet of a rear, which is the same as a shed, and we don't let anything sit in easements, so.
Good. Anyone else? John?
No, I'm actually looking at images of residential solar installations to see what's involved, and most of them seem to be roof-mounted. Sometimes they're almost like a cover over like a deck or a walkway, where then we get into an impervious surface discussion, and some are in the yards and are upwards of, you know, 15 feet or more long. So, yeah, it's worth, it's worth looking at and regulating.
And, and we will craft, so one of the main pieces that they want to interject in is our accessory use table. I don't know if everyone's been paying attention, but we just modified it for utility buildings. We just modify, we just recommended a modification for flagpoles. That table still needs a lot of work because we're basically piecemealing it right now. I would rather tackle this when I can sit down with that entire table and bring the whole table up to spec, not just piecemeal it one more time with the solar code.
Okay, well, keep up the good work. Let's move on to the next issue, Commissioner Training. Take it away.
So what we wanted to do is, Director Sylvester has indicated, and it's warranted, is that he was very familiar with his other organizations, that there was some sort of regimented training that the plan commissioners would go through. There are several ways to look at it. One, one way could be is that we kind of tack on a, a training topic as a discussion item to the end of what would be a shorter meeting. So if it's not a heavy agenda and we want to tackle something, we could do it there. Another way would be is that we have special meetings. Those would still need to be advertised in public, but we wouldn't necessarily want to have them on the same night that we were hearing zoning cases. But that takes a bit of coordination and making sure that everyone's available, and then, you know, we, we're, it's another night, night of the month that we would meet. And I don't know how often that would be. That would be based on how many topics we decide we want to cover. The other could be some sort of retreat, and I don't know that I've ever experienced that, but I'm sure we can look into it. But, you know, something where it's a Saturday and it would still be public, I would assume. However, it would be a bit more casual, I would guess. So the first was, we wanted to notify the commissioners that we are looking at doing training, and then I am looking for your feedback of the way you prefer to do that. And then if anyone wants to email me with some of the topics you might want to cover. So if you've never really fully understood a variance or what those findings of fact are, and we want to go through that, we could do it topic by topic. I'm sure there will be a, a whole series of trainings from Mr. Zemanek on the legal proceedings, you know, hit you on the spot with that one.
Yep.
But we're looking to, to understand what your preference, if you can try to discuss at least tonight what your preference is in terms of the type of training, that at least gives me some direction. So if you do arrive on the, well, if we want to round out a meeting that's short, then I can start working on that right away because I'm not scheduling special meetings. If you decide that it should be a special meeting, then I, I'll start buckling down and figuring out when people are available. So if you want to discuss that, and-
I would, I would think that the most successful way of getting together and making sure we're all here, if it could be an extension of a short meeting, we could tack it on. You will know in advance that there's going to be a, a short meeting, and that way we'll all be here. Whereas if you try to establish another day apart from this, we all have other obligations on other evenings, and it gets to be a very difficult situation. That's my, my opinion.
I would agree with that, although I was intrigued when you mentioned retreat, but then it sounded like it was just a Saturday afternoon, so I, I like the idea of tagging it on at the end.
Joe, I thought you said Bahamas.
Yeah.
I'd like the idea. I was thinking Lake Geneva.
We do everything remote. I may go back to Hawaii just to zoom in from there. But, so, so is that what I'm hearing, that everyone has a preference of just trying to do it on a night we're already meeting? Okay, I, I think, I think we-
Work out the time anyways.
Well, and if we find, you know, that we're going month after month, and it's not happening because these meetings are going until, until nine, and I would not be averse to coming in at 6:15 and doing 30 minutes, you know, if we could, I don't know how valuable 30 minutes are. What do you think, what do you think is, yeah, probably a one hour, 45 minutes minimum probably is what we'd be looking for.
I'm not objectionable to that. I do know we have a few commissioners that work downtown that may not be able to accommodate coming in earlier. I think I'm, I'm mentioning you, Thomas Sharp, I know that you work downtown. I don't know if you have the ability of getting here any earlier for something like that, but we can always poll.
Fingers crossed. I do right now. I hope to, I hope to keep that open for myself.
Okay. I'll look, I'll look to that as an option as well. And I think that also gives us the ability, correct me if I'm wrong, John, if I put as a, a discussion item, a training, that if the meeting ends up running longer than we thought, I think we have the ability to defer it. I don't think we have to, since it's-
Of course.
It's not a, a public hearing item, if for some reason we run late with something and we say, we just don't want to sit through another four hours of Joe talking about signs.
I'm just glad that we only have to do the sexual harassment training once a year. It's a bit of a chore. Any other comments on this?
That's all I had to discuss on that one.
Okay, thank you, Joe.
My question would be, I, I agree wholeheartedly with everything, all I had to say, but would, would our training session be part of the public meeting? Would it be televised? Would it be necessary to do that?
I would think we'd adjourn, wouldn't you?
Yes, I would presume we would adjourn and then conduct the training afterwards.
I don't know, John.
You, you would not adjourn because you're still meeting as a public body, so you can't adjourn.
Well, that's right. It's open meetings act, you'd have to, you have to be open.
But it doesn't have to be televised. So we could kill the audio visual, we'd still have to take minutes, so it may be recorded so that we can take minutes but wouldn't be broadcast.
Craig, I thought I saw a comment getting ready to come in.
I was agreeing with-
General updates, our next meeting will be on the 9th of February. Do we have any other commissioner comments before we call for adjournment?
Do you have any feedback on, on what, do you have any idea what'll be up for next meeting?
I believe I will have a special use for a drama academy on Chicago Avenue. I think they need a variance as well because there's a setback requirement to residential that can't be met. And potentially, the Park District for a kind of a renovation and rebuilding of the little concession stand that they have at Veterans Park. Neither are guaranteed as of yet.
I would point out also to the commission members and, and to our, our local residents who are on, on, watching this on television, that in the next six months or so, we anticipate an opening on this commission. And so we're always looking for, you know, for volunteers and highly motivated candidates. And so I encourage the public there to contact, if they have anyone in mind, or if they themselves would be interested, to contact any elected official or, or the village planning office, community development office, and, and would get some names for, for coming in.
We're not getting fired, are we?
Well, yes.
We didn't know how to tell you.
We may have several openings. At this point, Chair would entertain a, a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Clemens?
Second, Thomas.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned.